East Hampton City Council Meeting Wednesday, May 3rd, 2017. Can I have the roll call, please?
Dan Carey.
President.
Peg Connaught, here. Salem Derby.
President.
Jennifer Hayes.
Here.
JP Kaczynski.
Here.
Joe McCoy. Dan Rist.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Yeah.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Thank you. Will you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have minutes from April 19th. Can I have a motion to-
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, thank you. So I think what we're gonna do is we're going to postpone public speak time, if that's alright with people, and we'll try to pick it up after the public hearing, if that's alright.
Because we have a presentation.
Because we do have a presentation tonight. Okay. So, moving on to communications from elected officials, boards, and committees. Doesn't look like we have any correspondence. Doesn't, unless you want to, I guess we can wait to new business. Mayor Communications. Mayor Patrick.
I'll do it.
Okay. Alright, so reports of standing committees. Finance, Council Rist.
My next meeting will be the 10th. We're going to have five agenda items, which I'll read in a moment. I wanted to also announce that we have set the budget hearing meetings, and I would remind the councilors that, as you know, our committee-level meetings is where we go in-depth into all the subjects before us. And the budget is one of the biggest items we have to deal with all year round. It's a large, $30 million or more budget. And if you have questions, or if you're concerned about any department budget, we don't have the authority to ask them to increase it. We can debate with the mayor. We're not a rubber stamp. But we do, if you want to know why the mayor made those choices, please come to the committee meetings. Because, as you know, that June meeting where we do this, the budget hearing is long as it is. So at that night, it's difficult. If everybody's asking a lot of questions when you could've come, if you can't come to the finance meetings. Those meetings will be Tuesday, May 16th. And we will be doing school, employee benefits, human services, debt and interest. The next meeting will be Monday, May 22nd. Public safety, general government, and CPA. Wednesday, May 24th, public works, cultural recreation, and enterprise. All at 5:00 PM, all in Room 1. So those are the meetings. I'd also like to do new business. Now, in front of you, President Derby has allowed, Vice President Derby, excuse me if I'm out of here. Us to, the mayor's asked that we add a $10,000 into departmental transfer. So unless, and that's at your desk this evening. It was not in your agenda. Unless a councilor objects, I'd like to add it to the agenda and read it now, primarily so that we can get these smaller items done on the 10th and on the 17th, so it's not jamming us up on, when we do our June budget meetings. Anybody object to adding this to the agenda this evening? Okay, I'm gonna read it then. This is the first reading. The amount requested is $10,000 to be transferred from the reserve fund, $10,000. To be transferred to school Medicare, $7,000. Medicare tax, $3,000, for a total of $10,000. For the purpose of providing funds to supplement the Medicare budget.
Move to-
No, I'm gonna move them all over.
Oh, okay, you're gonna do them all. Alright, no problems.
The next is a supplemental appropriation request. The amount requested is $10,000 to be appropriated with CPA undesignated fund, $10,000. To be appropriated to the Echidah Orchard Rehab and Restoration Project, $10,000. For the following purpose: For the rehabilitation and restoration of the Echidah Orchard on Parkfield Road in accordance with the attached project funding agreement. The next is a supplemental appropriation request for April 26th. The amount requested is $15,000. To be appropriated from Enterprise retained earnings, $15,000. To be appropriated to Capital Water Cottage Street Dam Action Plan, $15,000. The amount requested be for the following purpose: To provide funds for an emergency action plan for the Cottage Street Dam. The next is a supplemental appropriation request. The amount requested, I already read that one, sorry. The last one is appropriation request from the Community Preservation Act. The amount requested is $25,000 to be appropriated from the CPA undesignated fund, $25,000. To be appropriated to the Hampshire County Courthouse Restoration Fund, $25,000. For the following purpose: For the restoration and preservation of the Hampshire County Courthouse in North Hampton in accordance with the attached project funding agreement dated April 20th. I move that all of these, did I do them all? I think I'm missing one.
Snow and Ice.
The Snow and Ice. Where the heck is that? Does anybody have it? Sorry, I have one more supplemental appropriation request. It's hereby made. The amount requested is $319,494.51 to be appropriated from free cash, To be appropriated to Snow and Ice, For the purpose of providing funds for the snow and ice deficit. I now will move all of the five aforementioned items to Finance for review.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I would also like to move that all of the five aforementioned items be set for public hearing on May 17th at 6:15 in these chambers.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That concludes. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Rist. Public Safety, Council Hayes.
Thank you, Vice President Salem Derby. We did not have a meeting this week. We didn't have any new business. And our next scheduled meeting will be January 6th, I believe, on Tuesday?
June?
June 6th, sorry. Already in November with my job, so. And thus concludes.
Thank you. Appointments. Council Smith.
Okay, we have no old business tonight, but there are two numeral appointments that I would like to make a motion to move to subcommittees, so I'll read both appointments. First is for Scott Kavanaugh for the Manhan Rail Trail with a term expiration of 12/31/19. And the second is for Douglas Ross for the Commission on Disability with a term expiration of 12/31/19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the two appointments? Okay, all those in favor?
And our next meeting will be May 17th at 5:30.
I guess I'll turn this to myself, if that concludes?
Oh, yes, that concludes, sorry.
So ordinance Subcommittee did meet last week, which would've been the 26th. And we looked at most of the items on our agenda. And one of the things we are moving on right now is we agreed that, I believe this was 3 to 0, that it was time to move the food truck ordinance out of committee. What we found was that anything that we would do would add layers of bureaucracy, and it wouldn't increase public safety. It would increase streamlining. And so after a lot of good ideas, and I think that, you know, this doesn't mean that we're never gonna come back to this if we have to, but the sentiment was to release this without prejudice from our committee. So I guess I would make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, we motion a second. Any further discussion? Any questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And I believe we're still good on all of our items here, as far as timeline goes. We are still working on the couple of things. We still have the Human Rights Ordinance in committee. I know that Council Hayes wanted to have some more further input on that. We are moving forward with plastic bags. And we do have a plan which does not include a ban. And so we will be crafting that and bringing that forward soon. And I wanted to just announce that the ordinance Subcommittee is going to be holding a joint public hearing with the Planning Board on June 6th. And we will be looking at the seasonal cottage and medical marijuana amendments at that. So, that concludes mine. Oh, our next meeting, thank you, is going to be May 10th at 6:15 in Conference 1. Okay, that concludes property. Council Kaczynski.
Thank you. We met last week to discuss the terms, possibilities of having a 40-year lease for the Town Hall Building. And we had voted to move forward with that. Now it looks like we have to do some additional work with our representatives in order to bring to the council a special act in the proper form of language. So we'll be working on that. And as soon as we can get together a date that we can all meet and meet with the mayor, hopefully, on this, we'll go ahead and have that ready for you as soon as possible. That concludes.
Thank you, councilor. Rules and Government Relations, Councilor Rist.
Okay, I think we can try to conclude this. We had a meeting this evening, which we discussed the request from the Finance Director to approve the chapter, what did I do it? Chapter 30B, Section 12B. I'll make a brief explanation, but I'm sure that the mayor and the Finance Director can do bar. We currently have the authorization, we do not have authorization to renew contracts. It's especially helpful in the school transportation contracts. If we authorize, if we accept this chapter, we are allowing contracts, such as the transportation contracts, such as DPW contracts, to be automatically renewed at the city's option for two additional years. This saves money in rebidding. Most of the time, when they do this, it's because there are no more than one vendor, so the bidding process is really a waste of time and money because they don't have anybody else bidding, but they have to do it by law. This gives them the option for two more years. In the transportation example was given that we could renew on the fourth and 50th year with only a 1.5% increase in the cost for all the buses. But in this case, if we had to rebid it, there would be a few thousand dollars more spent, and the contract would be reopened and have to be completely renegotiated. It's important to note that this can only be for five years, for two more years. Although there are some contracts, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong, such as in sewer water, where the contracts could be longer. But all of this is, as it says in the, in the chapter, is determined to be in the best interest of the city. And I trust that the man, the Finance Director and the business manager for the schools are trying to save money. This is why they're doing it. The Rules Committee voted 2 to 0 to approve it.
I just want to clarify, you're not adopting the section. The section says you must grant us authority to do so.
Okay.
Just so that the language is correct.
And just adding to that, what Councilor Rist had explained, and we had Dale Doran, the school business agent here earlier too. And this also allows, like, existing contracts that we have for three years, as she was explaining in her busing contracts. This allows them to either renew for an additional two years, or, you know, to read the economic climate, and then go for a five-year contract. So it gives the flexibility to look for savings that are advantageous to the city.
Any questions?
This did not need a public hearing, so I'll make a motion. I move that in accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30B, Section 12B, the City of East Hampton authorizes the mayor or the superintendent of schools to solicit and award goods and service contracts for terms exceeding three years, provided that in each instance, the longer term is determined to be in the best interest of the city.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Are we gonna do the public hearing?
Yeah, it looks like we're pretty good on the public hearing, so I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is now open. Council Rist.
Yeah, sorry, I'm doing all the talking here. This is also Rules Committee request that came from the mayor. The historic commission in East Hampton has had very difficult time meeting. And they meet once a month when they do meet. It has seven members. I, as CPA Committee Chairman, I asked the mayor to consider reducing the amount of members on the committee for the purpose of having them meet more often. If there is a CPA request that includes historic preservation, it must have the local committee's approval if the architecture is not already on the state historic landmark registration. In other words, recently, just as an example, we had a request from, oh my god, what's their name? It's the-
Off the Map.
Off the Map, thank you. Off the Map Downtown. They requested historic preservation consideration for the theater that they're, the old theater that they're in. And we couldn't act on it. We waited for a while for this historic commission to give us a statement regarding whether they thought this was a good thing, and they haven't been able to meet. So the mayor kindly did agree that we should reduce the amount of appointees to five. So by charter, we must have a public hearing when we change the administrative code for any of our boards or committees. So that's why we're doing it.
So I'm happy to bring this forward, and I think it's, it actually works out perfect because right now there are five members on the Historical Commission. So we were down two to begin with. So this will make it easier for a quorum and keep things streamlining so that everything runs efficiently, and none of our other boards and committees are held up.
Okay. Any comment from the public? Seeing none.
I will therefore move that pursuant to East Hampton Home Rule Charter, Section 6-1B, the City of East Hampton approves Administrative Code 17-1, which alters the total appointed positions to the Historical Commission from the current total of seven appointees to five appointees.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. To close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, back to old business.
It's me again.
Busy tonight, Council Rist.
So the CPA Committee did move and vote to rescind the parks request. So I'm prepared to make a motion that the council also rescind that vote. And I have the following motion. I move to rescind the following votes approved by the City Council October 19th, 2016, for the Daly Field, Anatok Park ADA and entrance renovation, the borrowing and bonding authorization in the amount of $460,000, the CPA reserve for open space amount of $49,200, and the CPA reserve fund amount of $88,800. I move that we rescind those votes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the item? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And I believe that that takes care of our new business.
Move that we close the open public hearing?
We already did that. But we can, we can now do public speak time. So I know Samantha, that Nancy's not here. Do you want to come up and share what you have? Even if we can't put it up there?
But you can hook it into the-
No, I'll just like go off the- You just won't feel seen.
So remember just to share your name and-
Okay. So my name is Samantha Garcia, and I'm a senior at East Hampton High School. So I've been involved with SAD, which is Students Against Distracted Decisions, since my freshman year of high school. We have been working, well, has anyone heard of SAD a lot? Yeah? Well, for those of you who don't, we kind of focus on things from self-harm, bullying, to things like drunk driving. We focus on a lot of destructive decisions. And I joined SAD when I was a freshman because destructive decisions were something that impacted me personally when I was younger. And so I thought that it was something that I could find my voice in and use my voice. And last year, I applied to SAD Speaks, which is a national SAD program, Students for Policy Education Advocacy and Knowledge. And I got accepted for like a Massachusetts representative. And I went to DC for four days. And I went through a couple trainings. And I trained with like the National Board of Traffic Safety. And we like learned how there's, everyone knows like drunk driving's bad, and distracted driving's bad, and drug driving's bad, but we also learned drowsy driving's bad. So I wanted to focus on bringing back to the community those four areas of like traffic safety problems. And if Ms. Dunn wants to hook hers up.
And so Nancy, the cable's right there.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I had him hook it up today, but I'm sorry.
That's no problem. We finished all our business. We're just here for the show.
You guys are done already?
Yeah.
Do you want to take it down?
Well, congratulations on being, completing the Massachusetts route.
Did I start at 6? You're done, okay.
Um, thank you. But yeah, so I learned a lot about statistics and-
If you've got to speak up so that we can hear, and also you need to be near the microphone, so if you need to take a break while we set up, or move over to the other side, I'm not sure you'll get heard otherwise. And we want to be sure we hear your voice.
Okay.
Barb, do you have that for you?
Okay. That's just not right. Do you want to read where it is?
This is what I'm worried about.
It's a rescue. It's three years.
Do you have your power? Do you want to do your, do you want to show your?
Should we just hold off for five minutes? Rather than have dead space on the air?
You want to have a quick adjournment?
Yeah, you can do it. Take a recess.
Quick recess?
Move that we recess?
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to take a five-minute recess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you guys can- I'll call us back to order?
Yeah.
So, thank you. You can reintroduce yourself if you want.
Okay. So I wanted to introduce Samantha.
Okay.
I was talking to, she's become a real leader. So I wanted to introduce Samantha, who last year applied for SAD Speaks, a national SAD Speak, to be a national SAD Speaks advocate. And in a competitive process, she was selected. And she did a training, she did an online training, and she changed her travel plans. Her mom actually paid for her to change her travel plan so that she could attend the training in Washington DC this summer. And the whole purpose in doing that was for her to learn how to advocate, learn advocacy and policy skills, and come back and do something in her community. She's done an awesome job at doing that. And Samantha has come up with some great ideas. She's, they're just the right person to be doing this. And I just want to commend Samantha for her commitment to Students Against Distracted Decisions. She's been a strong advocate for the past four years, and that she's leading us this year. She's also a strong applicant for recipient of a national scholarship at the SAD level as well. And so I just want to, she's going out with a bang by having a, one last campaign before she graduates. So I'm gonna turn it over to her.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi. So before I go into the campaign, Ms. Dunn wanted me to share my video of me, I spoke at a congressional hearing in DC while I was there. So it's about a couple minutes, not long, so, yeah.
And you have to know that Samantha didn't used to like the public speak.
Can you plug in that speaker to it?
I think it is.
That's a speaker.
He said it was on. Ashley said it was all set to go.
I'm wondering if the volume on the video is up?
It's playing? It's not playing yet.
It's not playing. I'm going to say to you this. I'm going to be an upcoming senior at East Hampton High School. I joined this job my freshman year and I've been a very active member of SAD. This past year, I was a captain from Texas. I joined SAD when I was seven years old. I mean, no, sorry. I joined SAD because when I was seven years old, my 15-year-old sister was given alcohol from her friend's father. He was careless in his actions and let her drink too much. She showered and drowned due to alcohol poisoning. Ever since that tragic day, I have been so sensitive around the project of underage drinking. In middle school, I used to cry and get mad when kids my age were drinking. But when I entered high school, I found SAD the place I can relate, the place I can connect, the place I found my voice. The opportunities SAD has given me are excellent. We do great things within our community. For example, we had a country concert for a cause. My freshman year, there was awareness on distracted and drunk driving. There was some issues in our community considering we had a previous high school student who was addicted to drunk-driving accident, and another previous high school student who was addicted to distracted driving accident. On top of our country concerts for a cause, we had done seatbelt checks for the distracted driving simulator to run school for a week. And we also have done a day where we had peers try to catch falls while wearing the impaired goggles, like you mentioned. Each of these activities are our way of trying to send messages in order to prevent danger and raise awareness. We love what we do and we do it for a great cause to save lives. So now I'm gonna talk about the campaign that I have. So I have, I named it the Quad D Traffic Safety Campaign because there's four Ds with like traffic safety issues, like. And so the first one is distracted driving. And our plan is to have lawn signs through East Hampton for, to raise awareness around these things. And so one of the signs for awareness around distracted driving would be "Stay Alive, Don't Text and Drive." For drug driving, the sign would say "Hits Lead to Hits, Don't Drive High." For junk driving, "Drive Sober, Get Pulled Over." And then for drowsy driving, "You Snooze, You Lose, Don't Drive Drowsy." And so our plan is to get these signs and place them across East Hampton. And it will be at the end of May towards the community barbecue. And also, I'm working on getting Snapchat filters. I don't know if everyone knows what Snapchat is, but it's an app on your phone. And when you're in East Hampton, you can get East Hampton Snapchat filters. So I wanted to make a filter for each of these D, separate rate, just safety issues, sorry. And get that going too as well for that week. And that's my plan. So if people, if you want to share like with everyone to help take signs when we get them, and put them around your lawns, that'd be great.
Yeah, so we're just trying to spread the word. And if you guys, if people have read the paper recently, there's a lot of articles on distracted driving, and things even police departments are doing to raise awareness around it. So to engage people in our campaign, I do want you to know that Tom Connor at the East Hampton Savings Bank is helping sponsor our signs, along with-
Florence Savings Bank.
Tom Con-
He's gotta be real happy with the name.
Sorry, Tom. And I go over there and say, can I talk to Tom Brown, please? Sometimes I'll, okay, Tom Connor at the Florence Savings Banks. They are sponsoring us along with Fink in Paris. So they are gonna help us with the purchase of the signs. And then our purpose in going to here and to the school committee next week and other organizations is to help get the signs out. So what we would like, maybe like to do is to come back at your next committee meeting and see how many signs you want to take, because we will have them by then. because we will have them by then. And yes, Mayor, we, we had our incidents with signs, but we'll make sure we'll get permission, permission to, to do the, the campaign. So the signs will stay up. The, we're going to be doing this the month, the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, after Labor Day. And it's going to culminate, there's gonna be a culminating event. We always have a community dinner at the high school, and we're going to do a culminating community dinner at the high school, and, and this will be a part of it. We're working on getting some speakers in and some people to, to talk about this, like, maybe AAA, and to have some, we have some giveaway for kids, like little ring bands that say, don't text and drive, um, and things like that. So we wanted to try to get the word out here first. So, and then, any suggestions, but we'll, we'll come back with signs at your next meeting, if that's okay?
Thank you so much.
Okay? Alright. Do you have any questions for Samantha?
No, but congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Which is a question.
No, I don't have a question, but I just want to make a comment that I think what you're doing is very admirable, and more teenagers should follow your lead. I'm in the transportation business. I run school buses. And, uh, all four of those things that you have up there are all four things that we daily have issues with, being out there trying to keep kids safe in school buses. So, yeah, thank you. And, uh, you should be very proud. Takes a lot of courage to get up there and speak in public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think, I think that I can speak for the council in saying that we, um, are proud of you and that we appreciate what you do. So thank you.
Yes.
Very much.
Thank you.
Our move, we adjourn?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Power goes to his head.